This conference will now be recorded.
I'm calling the regular council meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024 to order. Yes, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Kane?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Here.
Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
And I have two modifications to the agenda this evening. Consent agenda, we're going to add 7T, and it'll be the appointment of Greg Sundin to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term to expire on September 1st, 2027. And then we're going to add Mammoth Distilling LLC on to new business work team.
Are you as issues? What was the, what was the second one?
Second one was Mammoth Distilling LLC. So, we need that in two motions.
I'll move on the first motion and the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so that was to add to consent agenda, item 7T, which is the council appointment
of Greg Sundin.
Greg Sundin to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term to expire on September 1st, 2027.
Yep.
That was it, in a single word.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
And then under 14 cap, I would like to move that, the application for Mammoth Distilling LLC for an off-premise tasting room license to be located at 109 North Second Avenue.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any other minutes on the regular session or closed session, any additions?
None here, ma'am.
And just printer. We're down to five. Public comments. Citizens appearing before council on an agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. The only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed. Our comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience.
Hello, Kevin Kinter, 390 South Lawn, Alpena. I just wanted to make a couple of comments regarding importance of creating a situation or environment to improve housing here in Alpena. I like the, the project Gardens at, at Alpena. Appreciate the hard work of Target Alpena and City Council and staff. The look at this proposal for, in particular, the land that's being used and the long-term effects that it would create in the community, although I'm not necessarily sure that more senior housing is maybe the first priority, because I think it's that middle group or early group of starter homes or lower available, cost-effective housing. I like this project and what it'll do for the city of Alpena, not only in terms of the usage of TIF money and amount of units that are available, and then that, that land being used in that area, if I understand that it's part of the Brownfield development. But I also want to mention, think something that I've mentioned in the past, which is, I look at the gardens as maybe a little bit longer term, a longer to be effective to move these units, seniors in, seniors out of the community of Alpena in particular. But that, and I've talked about this before, I just wanted to reiterate something that maybe might be more short-term effective is by changing some of the ordinance, in particular the one that requires on rental units, two or four paved services. I see this as a, not a, probably not a huge thing, not overly monumental, but I think it drives and encourages people who would not consider the project because of the cost maybe incurred to, for one thing, go from a single family to a duplex, creating an additional housing unit, and this could happen multiple times, of course. But to look at some short-term, I maybe don't understand the process as well as I should, but to give that particular part of the ordinance a break for some period of four to eight years, see if it's effective. If, if it's not having any movement at all, then go ahead and put it right back in. But I encourage that type of city council action through the planning commission to make these opportunities available. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online? We have no public hearings, so we're to consent agenda. We have a long consent agenda.
Might be a halftime.
There might be a halftime. I'll do the very best I can with my voice. So, A is supposed to be allowed in the amount of $639,437.82, and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign the form. B, approve the request for an annual delegation of school plan review and inspection authority to a local unit of government enforcing A to Alpena Public Schools, and authorize Mayor Johnson to sign the form. C, approval of cemetery deed number 0305, buy-in between the city of Alpena and Michael and Denise Wetwerk, Wetwerk, and the amount of $1,049 for block 40, lots 184 and 184?
185, should be 185.
184 and 185. For the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign the said deed. Approval of cemetery deed number 0306, buy-in between the city of Alpena and Greg and Linda LaHaye, amount of $745 for block 40, lot 69, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign the said deed. E, approval of cemetery deed number 0307, buy-in between the city of Alpena and Brown and Wilman, the amount of $1,049, $490 for block 40, lots 126 and 127, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign the said deed. Approval of a cemetery deed number 0308, buy-in between the city of Alpena and William and Mary Pollard, and the amount of $1,490 for lot 42, lots 208 to 209, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care, and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soyt to sign said deed. G, approval of a new ordinance variance request for Joe's Bar on September 21st, 2024, from 10:00 PM to 1:00 AM. H, budget amendment request to increase expense in the amount of $7,500 in the general fund for the police department for continuing professional education. I, budget amendment request to carry over $116,730 in the equipment fund. Public Works Department from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 to purchase equipment. J, budget amendment request to carry over $55,000 in the general fund, lights department from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 for capital projects such as the downtown wiring and energy efficiency improvements. K, budget amendment request to carry over $112,800 in local street fund construction department from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 for thin overlay resurfacing and other capital maintenance projects. L, budget amendment request to carry over $373,000 in the major street fund construction department from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 for capital preventative maintenance projects and Long Rapids Road resurfacing, and increased grant revenue for $375,000 for the Long Rapids project. Budget amendment request to carry over $271,700 in the Marina Fund from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 to continue, to continue capital outlay projects supported by grants and to increase grant revenue by $225,000. Budget amendment request to carry over $200,000 in the general fund, Public Works Department from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 to complete Carter Street parking lot, Carter Street parking lot resurfacing. O, budget amendment request to carry over $19,500 in the general fund, sidewalks department from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 to continue larger areas of sidewalk replacement. P, budget amendment request to carry over $529,600 in the sewer fund collection department from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 to complete sewer mains projects, and $194,000 in the treatment department to complete SCADA?
SCADA.
Data and other building project. Q, budget amendment request to carry over $1,584,900 in the water fund production department from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 to finish capital outlay on the treatment plant building and Clearwells, and $559,000 in the distribution department for capital water mains project and to continue water main valve replacement. R, council appointment of Robert Bruning to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term to expire on September 1st, 2027. S, mayoral appointment of Alex Breckenridge, Paige Gordier, Ryanna Richardson, and Laura Shearer to the planning commission for a three-year term to expire on September 1st, 2027. And T is, it's a council appointment to, of Greg Sundin to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term to expire on September 1st, 2027.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
You got it.
Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Kane? Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now we have presentations. We have Rachel Smansky, city manager, employee of the quarter.
Good evening. I'm presenting the employee of the quarter for Kathy Heims, our human resources director who cannot be here tonight. And this is a program that we've had in place for, this might be the fourth quarter, third quarter, but it's a great new program that recognizes city employees for going above and beyond expectations, and we are lucky to have this dedicated team to serve our community. Tonight, we are here to recognize three members of our staff for their exceptional commitment to their departments and our citizens. But as a reminder, we do have selection-based criteria. They include a positive working relationship, upbeat attitude, rallies around the vision and values of the city, dedicated work ethic, proven methods of improving efficiency in the workplace, exceptional commitment to projects and tasks going beyond the requirements of their position, goal-oriented, a team player, and enthusiastic. Members of the staff can be nominated by any member of city staff, council, or the community, so if you have us, an employee that you want to recognize, please feel free to do so from the community. Nominations are passed on to committee members to evaluate. Selection committee members may change from time to time to keep things fresh. Staff members who nominate individuals will not sit on the selection committee to ensure neutral parties are involved. This quarter, our selection committee was Mayor Johnson, councilmember Erin Kane, and me. The most recent nominees are Public Safety Clerk Tracy Markwart, DPW. Hold on, I have a few points to make about each from their nomination letters. So Tracy, as soon as I can turn my page here. Tracy was nominated by Detective Sergeant William Gold, and he noted just a few things I'm picking out of here. Tracy is a proven leader at her position. She always accepts extra tasks on a daily basis without hesitation, and the department would struggle without her. Also nominated for this quarter was Mike Mishley by his coworker, Robert Wheelock, excuse me, and a couple of things pointed out were his excellent leadership skills with our summer help. He displayed patience, kindness, and above all, a positive attitude to everyone around him, and he takes the time to guide everyone in a positive way. So, also, we have DPW Fleet Manager Doug Rusnalski, and I'm delighted to announce that he is our employee of the quarter. And here to summarize some of Doug's accomplishments, excuse me, is city engineer and Doug's department head, Steve Schultz.
Take some of my thunder there.
Oh, no.
Because it's not very long. So Doug Rusnalski was nominated in the past for his commitment as the lead mechanic and relief foreman at DPW. However, since that time, Doug has accepted a new role as fleet manager. Once again, Doug has dedicated countless hours to the city, managing the entire fleet to be sure the city is fiscally responsible for repairs and purchases, but also safe in doing so. He has repeatedly saved the city money through planned preventative maintenance, recognizing issues before they come, before they become problems, and creative ingenuity. Recently, he fabricated a special fitting to grease an area of the bridge that has not been greased in years due to its inaccessibility. For just over $150 in fittings, he saved the city countless dollars in future repairs, which would have left the bridge inoperable for extended periods. Doug is typically the first call for anyone operating the bridge who runs into snags or malfunctions. He can usually diagnose and make corrections many times over the phone, getting the operations back on track for both vehicular traffic and nautical traffic running smoothly once more. Doug has embraced the new title with pride and is very appreciative of being involved in the entire recommendation, purchase, and maintenance process of the vehicles. Shannon can at times mention vehicles or potential equipment options, and Doug will thoroughly research the options and provide pricing and options very quickly. He is a good steward of the city's money and regularly looks for the most fiscally responsible opportunities available. He has also taken on, recently taken on the responsibility of liquidating out, liquidating out-of-date equipment, which generates some funding instead of just leaving vehicles and equipment sitting around taking up space. So, I don't know if Shannon has anything else to add?
You know, in addition to all those things, he has just been a leader just across the board, and at times I often joke, grabs me by the shirt collar before I make missteps or take us too far down rabbit holes before, before he, before I can't get us stopped. He's the one that stops me and says, no, we need to stop.
Yep.
I have to come up here?
So, without further ado, Doug, if you want to come up? They don't trust me with that stuff, so we'll have to get.
Apparently, you'll be getting your certificate later.
You'll be getting your certificate later, because it's so good.
We are a well-oiled machine here, yes.
Okay, now we're up to, we have no proclamations, we have to reports of officers, and we're...
Okay. So, at the last council meeting, we had a presentation from the developers of the Gardens at Alpena, and I do have Mike Muller from Target Alpena here to answer any questions that I cannot. And so, we're bringing forth the buy-and-sell agreement. I do have a couple of things that need to be updated if this is approved in the motion, and we would then get a clean copy for you to sign, Cindy. I'm looking at Bill because I know he has some comments.
I don't have anything specific other than answer questions, if there are any.
Right.
So, our motion tonight will be the purchase agreement, correct?
Yes, yes, the purchase agreement. I'll just note the things that need to be updated. So, there's an August 5th date. Obviously, we're in, into September, so we would need to update that. Also, because this development would require a, the development of a TIF district, that takes a few months, so the suggested date by Mike is March 31st, 2025, for a closing date, and that's on this page two. And then if you go over to page six of the provisions, one thing is the date would need to be updated there as well to March 31st, 2025. And then we have, we would have our consultant, Mac McClellan, actually lead us through the TIF district development process, and we had discussed doing a 50-50 split on that cost. Mac was giving us a cost of around $15,000, but he said, you know, he thinks that's on the high end, so a 50-50 split wouldn't be, you know, much of a, up to $7,500 for us. So, that would need to be put under provisions. And then we do have just the dates on the signature lines that would also need to be updated on page seven.
Anything to add? Does anyone have any questions?
Okay.
No, no questions, just a comment. One of the things that always seems to come up whenever we have something like this is why are we doing more senior housing? Very simply, if you've studied economics, one of the things that moves people is usually new employees or new jobs coming into your area. The other is placement of senior homes. There's a lot of people who would like to leave their homes and go into a facility like this, and so when you're in economics, this is actually a really good for the community. And even as we heard last week with the development of this location, we are still going to be underserved within that part of the population. So, we do have a housing program, or a problem, I should say, because we do need more homes, but this will open up. I believe the number is about 67 homes, or has a potential to, in our area, and there are a lot of younger families that would then, you know, move into those homes and still contribute to the community. So, this is a great move, in my mind, for our community. Having gone through and looked at this, and after the presentation, I'm speaking in favor of this.
Thank you. And just to add to that, in the survey that they did, there's still a shortage of about 1,200 senior homes, seniors that are looking for places to go, whether it's memory care or whatever, so the need is in that sector as well as the workforce sector, and we're working on all of it. Thank you.
I'll sign the documentation, so get on our laps now.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Okay.
I move we approve the purchase agreement as presented and amended.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
Or discussion? Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Noah?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have council committee reports. Who wants to start? Carol?
I'd be happy to. All right, so we have a little bit of movement on Little Red, sort of fitting, and that's one committee I'm just really eager to see get together. So, what I'm doing is contacting certain representatives from certain groups to get a meeting, get a committee together, I guess the best I can call it is an ad hoc committee, get things moving, so we can start with the light and the sandblasting and the painting of Little Red, because getting to, I think it's one of, going to be one of those wonderful things where people be able to walk and actually see it, because we're going to have an easement. So, that's that. We're still juggling in schedules and so on and so forth.
We look forward to updates on that.
Well, the announcement I have is there's a place called The Gardens moving in. One of the, the things that, in my committees, such as the Target Economic, there are a lot of other things that are going on behind the scenes, and as everyone on council knows, and just as a reminder to the public, there's a lot of those things that we, we can't speak of. We are out working, Mike works very, very hard, daily, and on weekends, and in the evenings, I'm meeting with different people to keep our economy going here, and, you know, we've been looked at as one of the best-growing economies in the state of Michigan. I just want to say I'm very proud of all that work and probably all the work that Mike has done, so, as, I can't speak to a lot of things that we're, we're specifically doing, but, you know, it is going on, you know, constantly behind the scenes, so. Other than that, I haven't had any other council meetings or committee meetings to report.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna pass.
Say that voice.
Yes, Montiel was working well to get the contracts for the environmentals, it's like this, so we're going to be opening up bids, bids, the 1st of October for the removal of the bad stuff in the home, shall we say, it was around there, so that we can get the places torn down. So, we're hoping to have everything ready by the first week of October to say, yes, these are going, the bids are going to go out for these guys, and hopefully get it taken care of before the snow flies and such.
What committee is that for?
That is for the Alpena County Land Bank Authority and such. This is for the three homes on Bedford Street to be able to, finally be able to take them down and turn them over to the Habitat Humanity so that new homes can be placed on them and provide more housing out here for that, so that's, that's a good thing in that light there. Other than that, Steve, we're hopefully going to be going out for bids on the finally pavilion at the Duck Park. Of course, I'm not going to hold my breath, because something always happens there with that.
And we're working on last steps with that right now.
That's, that's very good. Judy was very happy, you could, you could hear it in her voice once she sent me the email, so that was, she was very happy. She's done a lot of hard work on that, so that's what we have.
A long time coming. It's been a long time.
Aaron, nothing to report, thank you.
Mayor Johnson, I think the announcement I missed.
Did I miss the announcement? Oh, I did, so I'm going to go back to announcement. The deadline to file is a write-in for the mayor and a council member seat is Friday, October 25th, 2024, at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. Thank you. Now, we're done to new business. We have Chief Edmonds with ambulance purchase.
Good evening. Under the provisions of the ambulance service agreement with Alpena County Amendment 1, Section 6, ambulances, medical equipment, an ambulance is outlined to be ordered in 2024 with the additional cost to outfit with a Striker power load lift system and Power Pro-Cop for patient care transport. One of the challenges to this process is availability and build times. The traditional means to make this happen with a sealed competitive bid process pushes the timeline out 24 to 36 months, as it is now considered a custom build. Vendors are currently building what they call stock line trucks that are available on a first-come, first-served basis, requiring a deposit to claim the apparatus. These are standard ambulances with few options to customize layouts of the cabinetry, driver's compartment, or patient compartment, et cetera. In researching availability and purchase price to fit our needs, these line trucks are ranging from $274,000 to $290,000, plus an additional $76,000 for the Striker power load and COT lift system. This is pushing the cost of a new ambulance to $350,000 to $366,000, plus... plus the radio upfitting costs of approximately $450 or $4,500 for a new dual-head 800 megahertz radio for communications to the hospital and to dispatch. In looking to purchase a new ambulance in this method, it restricts us to finding what is first available and through a sole source vendor. At the Alpena County Board of Commissioners meeting on August 27th, 2024, I made a request for their approval and authorization to secure a new ambulance prior to bringing my request to council. I felt their approval needed to happen to ensure we would receive full reimbursement for the purchase as we were requesting more funding than the contract allowed for a complete unit outfitted to the conditions of the agreement. I'm requesting authorization by council to secure a new ambulance purchase, Stryker Power Load Cot Lift System and 800 megahertz dual-head radio system not to exceed a total cost of $400,000 or less on a first available basis. The anticipated delivery of a new ambulance and associated equipment utilizing this method could be as soon as late 2024 based on availability. The county, with them providing us the ambulance, they have actually set aside $200,000, which is what the contract allows, but we can't touch a new ambulance for that price. So that's why I had to go to them for the request to increase that in order to basically get us in the ballpark. In talking with the vendors, we can do it for under the $400,000, they believe, pretty comfortably, so.
Isn't that power?
Thank you, COVID. It's 75,000.
I was reading that ambulance costs in general have gone from 20% to 25% over just the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Increases on that alone, and that kind of follows that whole.
Yeah, so it's kind of handcuffing us from traditional methods where we've done it by competitive bid, by sealed bid process. The problem is, we do that, now they consider that a custom build because you're specifying what you want built. So it pushes it out as far as even 36 months, and it increases the cost because now it's a customized unit versus buying something to just stock off the line. So.
And this supplier that we're using is, you know, they've done all these ambulances and these builds, and this is nothing new for them or this company.
Yep, EV Plus is is one of the vendors. So they buy every everybody buys their ambulances through what's called Rev Group. There's one company that builds all the ambulances. They just have distributors. That's what this company is. They're they're a Michigan distributor. I think they're based out of Holland, Michigan, and they do all the upfitting and stuff for us if this is the route that we choose to go to. They have a couple of different models of trucks. The one we're looking at is probably one of the better built ones. It's not top of line, but it does get us what we need for our operations, so.
And one question that we all seem to get a lot to is, what is the life expectancy of when we purchase an ambulance?
Right now, we're going to a three-year rotation with the county, so you'd expect 12 years that that truck would come out of service. So and right now, as far as ambulance mileages, the one that we just purchased last year, which was due for us in 2022, has the least amount of miles. It has 50,000 miles on it already. And they go all the way up to 196,617 miles for the county-owned truck, so. So we got some mileage on. And we're going away from the diesels. We're going to all gasoline because they're more economical, don't have as many problems. And we consulted Doug with those. So we got his approval to make that transition, so.
Chief, may I ask you, what happens to the ambulances after they make their rotation?
So we have four county-owned ambulances, and we have two city-owned ambulances. The city-owned ones we maintain. We can get rid of those, dispose them anytime, use them how we need. The county ones, once we cycle them out, they go back to the county. The title gets signed over to them because they're essentially theirs. They pay for them. All this is is pass-through money for us. We we pay the initial and they reimburse us. So it's basically $0 out of the city's budget. All right.
Questions for Chief Edmonds?
I move that we authorize Chief Edmonds to secure a new ambulance for purchase complete with a Stryker Power Load Cot Lift System and 800 megahertz dual-head radio system not to exceed a total cost of $400,000 or less on a first available basis for reimbursement by Alpena County.
Any discussion?
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We're up to BM dot maintenance contract with city engineer Steve Shins.
All right, so the city received the proposed maintenance contract between the city of Alpena and Michigan Department of Transportation for maintenance of the trunk line sections within the city limits. I reviewed the proposed contract and compared it to the previous contract, which which is due to expire on September 30th, 2024. Upon my review and comparison to the previous contract, I found no substantive changes in terms or conditions of the contract. The city has a long history of working with MDOT and providing this service. I have the recommended motion there, but I'd like to add the, I guess, you know, maintenance contract 2024-0263 for the period of October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2029 to the motion.
October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2029.
I have no questions there. I move that we approve the MDOT maintenance contract 2024-0263 for the dates of October 20, pardon me, October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2029, and authorize a city clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
Discussion.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Steve?
All right, on August 20th, 2024, the city received an open bid for the 2024 Long Rapids Resurfacing Project. This project includes the removal, removing the existing asphalt surfaces and surface and about two inches of the existing gravel and repaving with a thicker layer of asphalt. This project is between Bagley Street and 500 feet beyond Arbor Lane. Bids were sent to seven firms, as well as posted on the city's website with three bids received. And you can see them there. This project is partially funded by an MDOT Category F grant that the city received last year. This grant provides funding to cities in rural areas to maintain and upgrade their all-season trucking corridors. The grant fund, the grant will fund $375,000 for this project. An adequate funding for the match was budgeted and is available in the major street fund for this project. Per our agreement, MDOT has reviewed the results of the bid and have approved the recommended low bidder. The city has successfully worked with Bowlin Asphalt in the past and is very satisfied with their work. Their recent projects include Ripley Boulevard and the paving for North Second Avenue. Based on the review of the bid, I recommend the motion that you see there.
Isn't it nice to see three bids?
Yeah, Leland asked me on Friday.
I hope that someone on council after December 31st won't have the same tenacity as I've had this certification of not wanting a single bid to get passed. But, you know, because we've saved $41,000 just basically because we've gotten free. And I've always pushed for that, and staff has been awesome when we don't have that, giving us some comparables such, so just a quick comment on that, too. So I appreciate your work, Steve.
And in answer to that also, the this bid went out once before and got only one bid, and we judged it fairly high. So we backed off on our completion date, which allowed them to schedule it out further. Got three bids this time. So I mean, those are just things, things you have to do sometimes.
Yep, no, I appreciate that. I really do.
Came in, yeah, much lower.
Want to have any other questions or Steve? Entertained a motion.
I move the following. We award the 2024 Long Rapids Road Resurfacing Project to Bowlin Asphalt Paving in St. Louis, Michigan in the amount of $601,129.60.
Second.
Any discussion?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
D Trunk Line Repairs. Project, Steve.
Right, on August 13th, 2024, the city received an open bid for the 2024 Trunk Line Repairs Project. Due to the complexities of working within the state trunk line, the city elected to bid these repairs to an MDOT pre-qualified contractor. This project will repair the asphalt surface at three utility digs completed last winter. Bids were sent to 15 firms, as well as posted on the city's website with one bid received.
Can we just talk about this?
The city, I have an answer. The city bid this project as with an alternate in hopes that several manhole covers could be replaced on the trunk line as well. This project would have been in cooperation with MDOT through our maintenance contract. After discussion about the price, MDOT has elected to wait on these repairs. So for that reason, the alternate one will not be awarded. These repairs are for part of utility issues the city is required to repair. Expenses will come out of the water and sewer funds to make these repairs. The city has successfully worked with Goodrich in the past and is very satisfied with their work. Additionally, we discussed the traffic control plan with Bruce Goodrich, which is the largest expense of the project. We are working with MDOT to possibly reduce the cost of this line item. And based on the reviews of the bids, I recommend that motion. What happened with this one, I what we believe is that there's only two local bidders, really, that that could bid this for us. The others are out of town as far as MDOT pre-qualified, and they both got together and bid as one bid. So they didn't, they couldn't really bid against each other because one is paving, one is excavation and that kind of work. And so they bid it together, and I'm, my guess is that the ones from out of town felt they probably couldn't touch the local prices for this, so.
Can I have a question? When do you think that that MDOT will do the manhole cover questions?
That is a good question. They're they're looking at some just like temporary repairs now that last, you know, throughout those last, throughout the summer, throughout the heavier trucking months. But our local office guy here has been talking with Shannon on a regular basis, and they're trying to figure out different things. So we continually talk with them about hopefully getting some of those replaced, just the whole cover and everything. So we'll still work with them on it, and we'll see what we can come up with. This was our kind of our branch to say, hey, we'll, you know, do part of this, and they just elected not to spend the money this year. So we'll see. See about around, we just we just approved the next maintenance contract, so we'll see what next year brings.
Did you tell them it's part of the damn roads?
Fixing the damn roads, yeah.
Yeah, so I know complaints over the years on the manhole covers specifically on that, you know, it's been a little bit offsetting to motorcyclists and so on. So it's something that is concerning for all of us, so I appreciate you you work up on that as well. And I appreciate your your explanation on that as well, too. It's always, you guys always come back with something usually to let me know why.
We try.
Steve? Entertained a motion?
We award the 2024 Trunk Line Repairs Project to Everett Goodrich Trucking Incorporated of Alpena, Michigan for the base bid amount of $59,250.
Discussion?
Mayor Potem Noah?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And now we're to E Trunk Line Tree Removal Project, Steve.
All right, on August 27th, 2024, the city received an open bid for the removal of 12 trees along the MDOT State, the MDOT right-of-way. Due to the complexities of working within the state trunk line, the city elected to bid this work out to professional tree service companies who have the ability and equipment to perform the work quickly and efficiently under traffic. Bids were sent to six firms, as well as posted on the city website with four bids received. You can see there, the city through its maintenance contract with MDOT is allowed to remove these trees as part of regular maintenance of the state trunk line. While the city will have to pay the contractor upfront, MDOT has agreed to reimburse the city for the work performed. There is adequate funding available in the major street fund to cover the expenses until reimbursement is received. The city has successfully worked with A1 Tree Service in the past and is very satisfied with their work. And the recommended motion is there.
Isn't this nice? I just like that when you say that, so. No questions?
Any questions? No, no. Entertained a motion.
I'll make the motion because it's such a significantly less. Very happy. To award the 2024 Trunk Line Tree Removal Project to A1 Tree Service of Alpena, Michigan for the base bid amount of $18,800.
Second.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And now we're up to F Mammoth Distilling LLC, and Karen Bennett is here.
Good evening. Good evening. And thanks for getting this on your already full agenda. It's much appreciated. So what we're asking for tonight is the approval of a tasting room license for Mammoth Distilling LLC to go into the vacant space which was previously occupied by the Fresh Palate. So the first step of that process is governmental approval before it can be submitted to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. That's what we're here today seeking from you.
Any questions for Karen?
Okay, do that. No question.
Would you like me to motion? Okay, I move that we award a distilling license to Mammoth, would it be Mammoth Distilling North Second Avenue LLC? Sorry about that. I should have said LLC. Did you?
Okay. I have it written. Associate, let me get that.
I'll read. Here we go. I moved at the application from Mammoth Distilling LLC for an off tasting room located at 109 North Second Avenue, Suite 102, Alpena, Michigan, 49707B, considered for approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Discussion.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, I move that we adjourn to closed session to discuss water and sewer litigation update.
Second. Councilmember Kane?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
We have no further business before council this evening, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn. My second.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'm getting your train delivered.